Here.
Councilmember Freer.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here. Ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I don't like phone calls.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Agreed.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Who's anyone that'd like to speak at the open forum? There's a sign up sheet. We'll be bringing that up here in just a second. Thank you. And Mr. Klein.
Thought you'd be way too busy this week to come up here.
The only day I could. I was kind of joking. I said, "You must have switched the meeting just for me."
You're not just bringing free tickets now, are you?
No, no, no. It's one thing I pretty much can't get, but I do have escort privileges, I've realized. But, hi, Jeff Klein, 227-10 ideal. I just stopped by to wish Aaron luck and say thanks for everything you've done for the city over the past, I lost track, but however many years it's been. So, I know sometimes it's been challenging and, you know, you've got both sides of every issue always pulling on you and you've really stood firm. And I'm actually kind of proud of you because I think it's a good move for you. I think your skills are very unique and I think will be very much appreciated in Rochester. And then one thing you're going to need to do when you get there is Roscoe's ribs. And you need to either convince the owner to reopen or convince them to sell to other owners because that'll be a hot topic there, trust me. So, thanks, Aaron. Good luck. Appreciate it.
Supposed to get them to move up here instead, right?
Yeah.
There is nobody else signed up? Anybody else wanting to speak on anything? All right, we'll close the open forum. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll look for a motion or changes there, too.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second on that?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Donovan, do you want to take us through the Headwaters?
Sure. Mayor members of council like to present the Headwaters Walker property concept review. As a concept review, this is advisory for the applicant, Mr. Len Pratt, to basically give him some guidance in future zoning applications. As you can see on your screen, involves currently basically two pieces of property because there's a land exchange potentially involved. That's the property outlined in Brown. It's currently, it's adjacent to the Fenway Plainfield. Mr. Pratt would like to exchange that for the yellow outlined parcel. It's currently city-owned. And on that property, he'd like to place a single-family subdivision of 25, 23 units. This would also involve a Headwaters PUD amendment, a zoning map amendment, a comprehensive plan amendment, and all leading up to the preliminary and final plat review and approval. Just briefly, it's 23 units and the lot sizes, lot setbacks, are somewhat similar to other Headwaters properties. Really similar to the Headwaters 10th Villas that were approved but aren't currently built. The actual site plan is here. See, it's located in Forest Road just north of the YMCA and the Headwaters Service Center. There's a single road leading into the property that actually aligns with the Fitzgerald Road below that. The focus of our attention tonight is the concept for the single-family review. This does include a 45-unit apartment building, which we may see a site plan for that this spring. But the focus of this is these lots, the layout, and this one single cul-de-sac. Planning Commission reviewed it. And I think the review was pretty positive. There was some concern about the trail parking, trailhead parking there at the end of this single-family road. Sorry. The road into the single-family development. And staff has some concern about the actual Stormwater Pond and also the series of drains and flowage easements currently on there that need to be vacated. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor members of council for any questions and comments for the applicant.
Thank you, Donovan. Any questions, anything from the council?
So, piggybacking on some of the questions that Planning Commission had, what is planned for park? Is there any parking that's planned at the trailhead? Or it looks like that is just the end of somebody's lot?
Well, it seems like the applicant is kind of taking the the advice of the Planning Commission, which mentioned that down at the Transit Center, there's a lot of parking. And if someone really wanted to use a trail, and this is part of the original Headwaters concept, to actually have that, that trail up there. The, that, you know, that would probably be a better place if there was parking. And, you know, though it still says trailhead parking, that's more consistency. And really, there's not parking proposed there. But of course, there would have to be some sort of vehicle turnaround there, you know, some cul-de-sac for vehicles to turn around.
Let me sort of piggyback on, if I may, so maybe it's maybe a more question of what the city's planned use of that trail is. I guess just, I would expect that it would be primarily residents moving or going towards other park areas and not have a lot of promotion of public use. Obviously, it's available for public use. Is there planned on parks, lakes, and trails of what that looks like? I just want to make sure it's consistent, I guess. Does my question make sense?
Yes, it does. And I don't think there's any discussion because this is kind of a new concept. And it, you know, as I think Donovan pointed out, there's always been a trail proposed there anyway. And so I think it's more about future park, pocket parks versus expansion of the actual larger park, Fenway.
I guess I would just want those to be consistent of what the intended use is and make sure we've got the parking that makes sense for it.
So, you know, just a couple, three things. And Mr. Pratt, thank you for hearing our kind of concerns and making some adjustments to this. I think the flow is a lot more usable. Concern again with the cul-de-sac, is that same size as the rest of ours? I mean, are our snowplows and stuff are going to be able to maneuver through there efficiently? Is that something, Donovan, that you've looked at?
I haven't checked the radius of that, but it does show it's a 60-foot wide right-of-way, which is the city standard.
Okay.
Ryan, do you have any more? Did you have any calculation on that?
This simply just showed a concept. They're well aware of what the development requirements of a cul-de-sac would be. Is that's an engineering standard that's been defined for a number of years. Same engineering firm did all the cul-de-sacs in Headwaters 9th, 10th, and 11th. So, they'll be those sizes.
We'll point out that in the packet, it does talk about fire access that Chief Newman was going to take a look at for fire apparatus churn radius.
Okay. And, you know, it is a senior housing plan, I believe, for the one-level townhomes. You know, just getting them plowed out so that they're not blocked in any, you know. Obviously, we can only do what we can do with the plows and that's kind of my question there. So, to kind of continue on, originally, there was kind of a community gathering spot, atrium, or something like that. Has that been completely eliminated or is that in there somewhere? Go ahead, or if you want to come up to the podium.
David joined me here. I apologize. I just had my hip reconstruction surgery here.
That's fine.
Oh, Roger, do I have that? Yeah, no. You know, I'm glad I'm vertical right now, but I if you live long enough, something goes out, I guess. What we did when we were here over, I think several months ago, we listened. And we took to heart the comment about straightening the road, making it a little more apparent what we were up to. And that's what we've done, you know, just straighten the road. And that actually took, you know, out, you know, the potential for that larger cul-de-sac, which at one point I was advocating, but I adjusted the plan and now this will be fine, you know, it will be. Because there's enough amenities, I mean, literally, in walking distance, whether, what direction you go, you know, to the parks to the north or to the south, all the things that now are making up the YMCA, you know, the city center library and all that. We're really think, we're really, I concluded that we've got enough going on here for gathering. We do. My opinion, so. And I wanted to reiterate, we are working on possibly a twin-home layout, but it's not going to take any more layout or more land. It's just attaching the product, you know? And I think you've seen that, too. I want to make sure that's clear. And I'll have that all worked out when we come through the formal process here, you know.
All right.
Yeah.
I'd like to say thank you because it's very clear, Len, that you did hear what was said and the shift makes a big difference and thank you for that.
That's what we do. Two ears, one mouth, you know.
Now, the common bond, the 45-unit apartment and the senior layout are basically two completely different products.
True.
They don't share amenities together with each other or anything like that?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
But historically, this is what I know works. You know, you've got people that, quite frankly, are at or around, you know, the same kind of use, you know?
Sure.
And this, as long as it's disclosed upfront, this is what we're doing, there'll be no conflicts, you know?
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, that looks good. And I, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, we got the little designation of the trail and where the road ends. Will that road sometime in the future, is that planned to continue that road? Or, I mean, just kind of a weird ending there. It just stops.
It's, yeah, it's just potential to continue. I was actually going to ask Donovan is, is that something that we could look at? Creating just a gravel parking area there? I mean, would that meet, you know, some type of use? Or is that not something that would be within code for, you know, the end of a road? Just on our part of the property, somewhere people could pull in, park, you know, take their dog out for a walk, do whatever on that trail rather than having to, you know, park along the street or, you know, park at the Transit Center anyway?
I would say it's possible. I would suggest that we'd want to build it to city standards, you know, for long-term maintenance issues. But the, that'd be something a great conversation to have with the Parks, Lakes, and Trails Commission on kind of what input they'd like to see for the area. But I think that would really add. And what, one thing we identify is if that's a trail there, continue the trail through this new subdivision and then it could actually pick up along Forest Road and then you actually have a Harwood Creek Trail to Fenway Fields trail connection. I think it's a real advantage.
All right. And now, does anybody have concerns or questions on the land exchange portion of the project?
I, that was all taken care of earlier for me.
I still don't like it, but I think it does serve the city purpose. I think we're getting in the houses and product that Mr. Pratt's going to put in will actually benefit the city just as much, if not more, so.
All right. Do we need a motion on this or is this just a?
Just informal review and I think you provide some good feedback.
All right. Any other comments from the council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice words.
Yep.
Mr. Girard, welcome. Can you have a Planning Commission update?
I do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As you mentioned, I'm Paul Girard from the Planning Commission. And first off, on behalf of the Planning Commission, we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city. Each and every one of us enjoy our time on that commission. We hope we're doing a good job for the city. I'll give you a little rundown on what we've been up to and then fire away as you see fit. 2017, we had 27 items that we reviewed. Donovan will show a slide a little bit later, or he could be showing it right now, on the various items, variances, continuous use permits, et cetera. As you can see, we are very pro-growth on the Planning Commission, within reason. We do think there should be an orderly growth. We think we're well-aligned with the councils and the city administration on growth. There are times, though, that when the commission wishes we had more proactive input on managing growth, but we also realize that people are going to develop when they're ready to develop. We're not here to force anybody earlier, sooner than they want to develop. That's why we end up with this orderly growth and sometimes it doesn't think that we're going along with what the city has in mind. We are very excited about the comprehensive plan. We get to make some changes on that. We get some input from the citizens. And then we can rearrange our zoning to line up to get the growth that the city is looking for. Along those lines, if you haven't spent enough time here, there's four meetings coming up on the comprehensive plan to give input. One of them's as early as tomorrow night. Feel free to stop by. I'll be here if you haven't seen enough of me tonight. Another thing I wanted to bring up briefly is, and I don't know how many are aware of this, a number of years ago, the Planning Commission was given quite a bit more authority to make final decisions for, lack of a better term, for variances, et cetera. We've taken it very serious. We don't make flippant decisions, we don't think. We think we've made good decisions based on two data points. One, there hasn't been a whole lot of appeals to the city council. And two, city council hasn't visited us to realign our thinking. We know also that the council is discussing shrinking the Planning Commission. We discussed that. We have no problem with that at all, going down to a seven-person board. We think it'd be a great idea. That wraps up my presentation. I can take questions. Donovan's got a couple of slides. What is your pleasure?
Well, thank you very much. I mean, I think I speak for all of us that, you know, we appreciate all the commissions and your efforts to the city. And, you know, it's been a pleasure working with all, you know, the amount of time and expertise that you guys put into this makes our job much easier anyway, so.
Appreciate that.
And Donovan, you said you had a couple of slides?
Yeah, I just, it was really more of a, something included in the packet. There's really not much to discuss. But I did want to just give a little brief overview for 2017 because I was jealous when Ryan, in last December meeting, was doing the 2017 wrap-up. I thought, I can't just let him, you know, have that be unanswered, so. Showed that, you know, we did a number of decks and building permit applications. These are all, a lot of these building permits, and then the sign and fence permits. And then in addition, dealing with complaints. And that we can see the majority of them, actually about two-thirds, were resolved and some are ongoing. And also just further, if you want to, you know, refer to your packet, you can see the types of complaints that we deal with. So, give you some idea of what the day-to-day things we do with Bailey and Ashton in the zoning division.
All right, thank you. So, I'm going to start off with throwing a question out to you is, are there changes, direction that, you know, to facilitate an improved planning commission? I mean, status quo seems to be working well, but I'd like to get just some personal opinion on what you see with your duties on there and if there's things that you'd like to see differently.
For the most part, I think you're right that the status quo is pretty decent. Again, with the number of commission members, there's frustration with not being able to do more of the actual planning. And so at times, oftentimes, we're reactionary body. That's the nature of the beast, though. And after serving a couple of years, most of them come around to that. But we do have some very active people in the community who are very gung-ho. And we get a lot of good input from the various commission members. You'll see our votes are not often unanimous. There's usually one or two who have a different opinion. And it's usually on one point or another. So, in general, though, it's going quite well. I think the question we would ask is, is there something you would like to see from us when we make recommendations or we pass something? Are you getting enough information from us?
You know, the one thing I would say is, the part I don't get to see, and I'm not sure all of this is, is Planning Commission interaction with city staff. And, you know, how does that flow of information, are you satisfied there? Are you getting your documents, you know, quick enough for the meetings and, you know, so people can prepare ahead of time?
We get the documents plenty of time for the meeting. They're not always complete. I don't think that's necessarily the city's fault. They're at the mercy of the developer submitting everything. Everybody says, yes, it'll be here. And then the 11th hour shows up and the rest of the data doesn't come. But you still have to, especially if it's a public hearing, we need to hold it that night because notice has been given. So, that gets a little frustrating. On the other hand, we want to keep the process moving so we get through it. We're not unanimous lined up with recommendations by the city. We'll occasionally go a different direction or vary some. But in general, I think we get good input, but it's not always complete. And again, I'm not sure that that's the city's problem.
Thank you. And you had a question?
I want just more of a statement. As a proponent and suggested that all the commissions, at least annually, I would like to see more, do the very thing you're doing right now, report to us instead of our liaison attending your meetings. And then we have to rely on the liaison to hopefully interpret the meeting correctly. So, I guess I'm asking you as to what would you feel would be adequate? Four times a year, one, twice a year?
Whatever you, as the council needs, you know. If you want it twice a year, quarterly, it doesn't matter. It's a lot of commissions to hear. I'm not quite sure how many there would be to report. I don't know if I have that much excitement.
The Planning Commission for, from, I'm sure each commission would report differently.
I would think that since you guys have given us a little more leeway, it might be worthwhile to see us a little more often. And we may want to, I'd be willing to come back and give you a rundown on some of the decisions that were made, how many of each decision, whatnot. Whatever you would want to see to make your life a little easier.
Personally, I'd like to see you guys here twice a year. I, it's not often I give Chris Johnson a lot of credit because this was actually one of his ideas to actually, we worked together to try to give the Planning Commission more authority. And I think it was literally one of the best decisions that's been made by the city in a long time. And it speeds up the process. There's still an appeal process. And if you remember back, and by the way, your leadership on that commission is outstanding and I want to compliment you on that. If you remember back a few years, it was not like that necessarily with the council. There was a lot of overturned decisions and things like that. We got together with several different, well, council went through a training, Planning Commission went through a training, then we got together and talked. And then about a year later, more authority was given. And I just want to compliment you guys on how well that commission operates and the thoroughness of how you operate, so.
Thank you.
And that's, a lot of that is due to your leadership. Thank you.
I'll piggyback on some of the comments that have been made. I tend to watch a lot of those meetings online, especially as we're reviewing a topic. And inevitably, somebody's answered the question that I had. So, I appreciate that and I also think you have a depth of expertise and a depth of conversation. That's fantastic, so, well done. Keep doing what you're doing, please.
I get, oh, go ahead, Simon.
Paul and I worked together about 10 or 11 years ago on the Planning Commission. I think you're the one left off the old, original.
That's correct.
Commission, I'd say. We don't always agree on things, but we always had good conversation and I always appreciate that very much. We always had that dialogue, so. Thanks, Paul, for all your hard work.
Thank you. And they're very, you know, the commissioners are not afraid to voice their opinion, whether it's counter or pro or whatever it might be. So, there's no stifling in the conversation. I attempt to wind it up before we beat the horse and put it away wet, as they say. So, hopefully, we keep it moving along quick enough.
Well, and I guess, you know, with the upcoming comprehensive plan, you know, we're going to be seeing each other a little bit more than typical. But one of the things I'd like to hear back in the future is, you know, are we running into city codes, city ordinances that are obstructing? I mean, are there processes that we can affect change that makes it easier and not just for you, but for developers in general, to come here and to build within our city? So, you know, I'd like to hear back that, you know, we just changed the garage ordinance here a little while ago that had been hindering people. But, you know, that's, I think, one of the big things that you guys can help us with is, you know, when you're running into those again and again, or, you know, even the first time, if this just doesn't make sense to the Planning Commission, bring it forward to the council so that we can review it, too, and come up with a consensus.
No problem.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. And that is going to move us on to 7E Liqu vape license. Bailey and Bridget.
Mayor, members of the council, Widenheimer &amp; Moore Enterprises LLC DBA Liqu vape is before the council tonight for hearing concerning the renewal of their 2018 tobacco license. The hearing was continued at the applicant's request from the January 8, 2018, meeting to the agenda on the January 22, 2018, meeting, which was canceled. Liqu vape is the tobacco license holder located at the premises of 67 Lake Street South in Forest Lake, Minnesota. Michael Widenheimer is the owner of applicant. On December 20, 2017, Widenheimer &amp; Moore Enterprises submitted an application for renewal of its existing tobacco license. Because Liqu vape failed two compliance checks in November and December of 2017, their tobacco license application is before the council for consideration tonight. Liqu vape was served with notice of the January 8, 2018, hearing by Certified Mail on December 21, 2017, and appeared in the January 8, 2018, at which time it was requested that the hearing to be continued to the January 22, 2018, meeting. It was informed by myself on January 22, 2018, that the hearing would be continued to tonight, January 29, 2018. The alleged tobacco license violations, which required that this license application be set for a hearing this evening, occurred on November 19, 2017 and December 19, 2017. In both cases, a tobacco compliance check was conducted by the Forest Lake Police Department with the assistance of an underage buyer who entered the licensed premises and was sold E Juice, which contains nicotine as a tobacco product. Additionally, Liqu vape has failed previous compliance checks conducted on April 5, 2016, May 6, 2015, and November 25 of 2014. Information regarding Liqu vape's license application, past compliance checks failures, and relevant city code. Information regarding Liquor Vape's license application, past compliance checks failures and relevant city code and statutory, state statutory provisions are included in your council packet. Your honor, if anyone would like to make a motion to accept exhibits one through 11, which are in your council packet, into evidence?
I thought we did that before, but.
Mayor, members of the council, we didn't.
For this meeting, we needed?
We need to, we're having a brand new hearing.
That's fine.
So moved.
And to clarify, your honor, if I may, the exhibits are, start on page 66 and run through, I want through page 95, I believe.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
So Chapter 118 of the city code provides various grounds for denial and renewal of a tobacco license application. Pursuant to City Code 11805, staff recommends denial of the renewal application for Liquor Vape for the following reasons. The license activity has been conducted in such a manner to constitute a menace to health, safety and welfare of the public upon recommendation of the police chief or appropriate city official as evidenced by its failure of five separate compliance checks within the past four years. The licensee has failed to continuously comply with all conditions required as precedent to the approval of the license renewal, namely, failure to operate the licensed business in a lawful manner by allowing the illegal sale of tobacco and tobacco products to underage purchaser on multiple occasions. The licensee has conducted business in violation of any regulation or provision of the city code applicable to the activity which the license has been granted or any regulation or state law that may be applicable, namely, by allowing the legal sale of tobacco products to an underage purchaser on five separate occasions. Other good cause for non-renewal of the license exists, namely, the licensee's allowing the legal sale of tobacco products to underage purchaser on five separate occasions within the past four years. This is just a recommendation and the decision of whether to approve the renewal application, approve the renewal application with conditions or deny the renewal applications is up to council. If council votes to deny the renewal applications, we do have a resolution prepared that articulates these reasons for denial for council consideration. That is all I have. I'm unsure whether representative from Liquor Vape is in attendance this evening? Yes, there?
Thank you, Bailey. Yeah, please.
Good evening, Mayor Winnick and council members. As you recall, my name is Jeff Olson. I represent Liquor Vape, Mr. Moore and Mr. Widenhammer. First, I'd like to thank you for the continuance. I think it was fruitful. We were able to meet with Ms. Fensel and Mr. Undum and have a good discussion. And so I appreciate that. I also appreciate the postponement of last Monday's council meeting having, I live in Chanhassen, so it would have been quite a drive back and forth. I appreciate that. As I mentioned briefly at the last hearing, you know, one way to look at this is it's an opportunity to make things better. And I think my clients have been working pretty steadfastly in that direction. And they're the ones that do business in this town. They're the ones that are a part of the community. And so at least for this renewal portion, I would like you to hear mostly from them. First off, I'd like to ask Tim Warren to come up. He's one of the owners. And not always, but it can be the case in Minnesota where it's hard to get people to brag a little bit about themselves. I run across, certainly there's some of the other type, but it's sometimes hard to get them to brag a little bit about themselves. So I want him to tell you a little bit about himself and Mr. Widenhammer and what their role is and what they've done in the community. In fact, I made him do it. After that, I'd like Mike to get up and explain what they were doing to prevent sales to minors and what they've done since then and what their plans are in the future to make sure that there's compliance at their shop and maybe even within the community. They've got some good ideas, I think. So with that, I'd turn it over to Tim Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Winnick, members of the council. Please forgive me, I don't do a lot of public speaking, so might have a little bit of jitters in me. I'm here tonight to tell you briefly a little bit about Mike and I and why we started this business. Mike and I come from the fitness industry. We decided in 2012 that it was time to invest in our own futures. At 25 and 26 years old, we left comfortable regional sales manager jobs, positions to combine our life savings and become entrepreneurs. Mike is a father of an eight-year-old and a four-year-old and a husband to a fourth grade school teacher. Forest Lake, there I go screwing it up, I apologize. So I am a father to a 10-month-old and have another on the way. I also volunteer in the Big Brother Mentor to teens that find themselves in unfortunate circumstances. My wife is a nurse and works as a teen for young adults who have cerebral palsy, seizure disorders and physical, other physical challenges. I'm telling you this because it may help you to understand two points that I would like to make at the risk of sounding like we are boasting. If we don't tell you, you're likely not to know some of these things about Mike and I. Our families are a part of this community and depend upon this business. Being fathers and husbands has and continues to mature us in a large amount and how we appreciate, how we approach business and the community, and the commitment to the community. Incidentally, Mike and I have never smoked. And as parents, we appreciate the importance of not selling tobacco or nicotine to minors. In the last five years since opening the store, we have sponsored fundraisers and donated funds to these fundraisers to be a part of the community. The following are some of the examples of the community involvement. We have sponsored blood drives for the American Red Cross in Forest Lake. We raised money for the Forest Lake Stomp Out Suicide Charity, which was created in memory of Alyssa Haynes. In the past few years, we have raised over $3,000 for the Salvation Army. In 2016, we found out that one of our customers had a house fire. We started a fundraiser to help the customer and his or her, their families rebuild their lives after the fire with our business matching the funds that we had raised. We have also raised funds for St. Jude's Children's Hospitals. In this past summer, we also sponsored and conducted a Freedom Free Ride for the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, raising awareness and money for assisting veterans and their families focusing on education, health, wellness and financial stability. This is not all that we do to be a part of the community, but we want you to know that we take being a part of the community seriously and want to give you a few examples of what we have done to give back to be a part of the community. As business owners, we not only encourage but promote this in all that we do. It is our intent to continue to strive for excellence, adhere to the standards before us and continue to be a part of this community. With that being said, I would now like to introduce you to my lifelong friend, business partner, Mike Widenammer, who is going to give you some of the background on us and what we have done in the past and what we're going to do in the future to prevent sales to minors.
This is Mike.
Good evening, mayor and council members. What I'd like to do is briefly just review what we did since we became an existence here in Forest Lake in 2012 as a business to try and avoid selling to minors whatsoever and also what we've put into effect since our last failed compliance. So all things that we're going to talk about that are in effect have been since January 1 of 2018. At any time, if there's one you have questions on or want more detail on, please stop me and let me know. So starting in 2012, when we started business, we started doing internal compliance checks twice a year. We also had quarterly memos that were sent out to all staff reinforcing and educating that selling to minors would not be tolerated. Employee handbook was given out at all new hires and that stated the sales to minors would not be tolerated, our core principles as a company and our employee expectations as far as regards to sales to minors. Store signs before and after entering clearly stating that an ID is required for all people under the age of 30. We had the WE ID calendar, the point of sale, basically said the date if they were any time after that date that they should not be sold to. Notes in sales stating that customers were identified as over 18. So there's a notes section in our transactions and we were supposed to be putting notes in there for anybody that was close to the age of 18 that needed to be IDed. And it was just supposed to have their date of birth. One showing that they did check in, two getting it logged in there so we knew that they were checked. And then when we first got started, I did get the opportunity to sit down with a school liaison here at the high school and have a meeting with them in regards to, back in 2012, the knowledge on vaping industry and products was little to none. And so I did go in there and spend some time with the school liaison back in the beginning of 2013, informing them of our intent, what our product was, chemicals involved in it and what our intentions were and that we were going to take it serious, that we would do our best not to provide to minors in this community. Now, since our last failed compliance check, so starting in 2018, we now have made it mandatory for every employee must go through the wecard.org training online. So just like the little paper card I talked about, they have a training course online. It takes 15 to 20 minutes of them sitting down one-on-one on the computer and going through it. It's a small fee for for every employee that we have them out now all do that. On top of that, we are working on right now, I don't want to make a promise on something that we haven't locked down completely, but we are looking at incorporating a new software program that would require an ID for all purchases. The goal there is just to take the possibility of human error out of the equation. At this point, we obviously cannot afford to let that be there. We adopted a new no ID, no sale policy. So we're not going to leave it up to discretion of any employees at this point. 30 years of age isn't going to work, so we are going to a no sale, no ID, no sale policy. It is going to be effective February 15th, just because we gave, if we are renewed. That was just to give some of our regulars that are clearly over the age of 40, 50, a couple of weeks to understand, look, as of February 15th, you must have that with you or we will not be selling to you, period. With that, we also did incorporate a internal employee recognition program. So that's a $50 gift card for every past compliance check, whether it's an internal one or through the city. And then we did implement back in January 1st, the automated ID card scanner system. So that has been put into place, that is used every night. And the other thing we do with that is we do a nightly audit. So at the end of every day, our staff, whoever closes our store, sends out a message to all owners, management stating customers and recaps the sales stuff, just a few criterias. We have now added a criteria that they have to note how many ID cards they scanned and how many sales there were. So obviously, we go back through that in a paper audit as well, with our district manager goes back through that. I don't want to tell you daily because he's not in that store every single day, but it is done multiple times per week when he is in that store every time that's part of his audit. And he goes in there to verify that every person had an ID scanned and checked. We are going to, we talked about internal compliance checks we used to do. We've now made it mandatory, we're going to be doing it every 90 days instead of twice yearly. Employees are going to be required to take safe tobacco sales tests on January 1 and July 1 yearly, not first year of employment, as long as they're with us, January 1, July 1. Closest date of that, that they have a shift they work, they will be taking the online course and passing that. And it will be kept on file for our records and for anybody else's records that would like to look at it. That is going to cover the basic stuff. I do have one other thing I was going to recap briefly with you guys. Obviously, at this point, it is a big concern to the city, as it is to us, that these compliance checks start to turn the other direction and that we keep this product out of use hands. So I have a few sheets here that I'd like to recap. I didn't know if there's a possibility to put it up on the TV or on your guys' computers?
I'm going to pull out that drawer right there.
Do I face it towards me or you?
Towards you. Towards you, yeah.
Okay. And then let me know once you guys have it and then I'll just kind of recap it for you here a little bit. And if you have any questions.
Grabbing it right now, so. Little music will we win? As long as I'm not just saying you guys, it'll all be fine.
Good?
Okay.
Okay. So we're proposing what we named a Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative Program that we feel like, one, we're going to do it at our store regardless, but we feel like it could greatly benefit this city and this town. So it's something we put together. Obviously, all, some of them are just some ideas that go with it. But the first one I'm going to recap first actually is going to be some of the requirements and how it works. And then it's something that we definitely like to spend more time on at a workshop with you. So the first thing that we are looking at that would be part of this program would be allowing inspections of records to ensure criteria is being met. So this is something where we allow the city to look through our criteria as far as making sure everybody took their online courses on the dates that were discussed, that they took the paper courses and tests that were required. Each employee must take the employee training through wecard.org records and must be kept upon completion. Employee would be required to take a safe tobacco sale test on January 1 and July 1 and records would be kept of the test. And this is a policy that's, you know, obviously, we went a little stricter, but policy reclaim and identification checks for any tobacco customer appearing under the age of 40. Internal employee recognition program, that's given them a reward for passing any compliance checks. Approved internal compliance check program, records of checks to be kept on file. Failure to pass internal compliance checks results in mandatory retraining. Automated ID card scanner systems and pre-arrangement to meet immediately on violations with police department and city staff immediately instead of waiting for criminal court proceedings. Those are the requirements we are looking at that we proposed would be a part of this program and what we are already going to be following and in some cases, it's going to be a little bit stricter for us as well. Now, what our program that we looked at is we did take some criteria from other cities and just different areas and put together our own program that we feel like would be beneficial. So like we said, it's called a Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative Program is what we named it. And it'll be a program where anybody that sells tobacco products in this town could either partake in this or they could not. And the benefits to partake in is your license fee would continue to be at $250. And we felt like if you decided you didn't want to be a part of this program, you could pay $500 for your license renewal fee every year. And the things that would come with it, like we talked about, is you'd have to allow inspections of the records and all the things that were listed here. If you decided to be a part of this program, those are all things you'd have to be doing and keeping documentation on that we talked about. And then the only things it would do is a little bit of change on the filing. And one of our biggest things was we really wanted to focus on more education. Because we can warn people and we've told our staff a hundred times what not to do. And at this point, it hadn't worked. So we really focused on a lot more education. So we just looked at if they are, if any store is a part of the Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative, their penalties are here. And if they're not, their penalties are on the other side. So some benefits there. Obviously, if somebody decides they don't want to be a part of it, they're going to get a larger fine on the first violation, it'd be a 500 fine and a two-day suspension of their license. Second one would be a $1,000 fine and a five-day suspension of their license. If they're a part of the Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative, it'd be a 250 fine on the first one and a 550 fine on the second. And then it goes down from there. One thing we did want to talk about that we felt like is something that should be addressed a little bit. By no means are we passing the buck on it, but we do feel like the staff should have a little bit more regiment and structure under what happens to them when they fail a compliance check. So we did put in here, if you're a part, whether they're a part of it or not, it's a $500 fine for the staff if they fail a compliance check and mandatory training required to reinstate employment. So they'd have to go back through online courses, the paper test courses. And every criteria that's in here, they're starting from scratch and have to go back through the entire education course. And then following that, on the second one, we were looking at immediate termination. So that's a program that we've put together in a short period of time. Definitely can have some things that could be improved and input there. It's something we'd like to bring to a workshop if given the opportunity and help improve further down the line. But it's something we're taking very serious and we believe that would benefit this community greatly. And obviously, we have a problem with failed compliance checks as of recently. And we want to do our part to fix ours along with everybody else in the community as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Questions for us?
Questions? Go ahead, Ed.
Couple of comments, I guess. One, I can applaud you for trying to put a comprehensive plan together that would benefit not just your store, but all stores that are in the same situation. The problem I have is your situation is five failures over a four-year period, I believe. And yet, in one of your own things, you recommend if one of your employees were to fail with this new training, that they would have to be, or basically go through the training again. And I would think in your situation, that if any employee failed, they'd be terminated. I mean, I just, I'm kind of taken aback that you're up here trying to fight for your license and yet you would develop a plan that your current training. and yet, you would develop a plan that your current training wouldn't terminate.
Yeah, so, part of our reasoning for that is, we did have that adopted for the first three years here, and we've had three different failed compliances during that time, and did terminate those employees. And we learned from that, that we basically started from scratch, trying to explain the seriousness of the, of the offense. And I mean, I'll just be honest with you, it didn't work for us by turning over that person and bringing in a new one. We're starting from scratch, understanding and explaining the seriousness of this, and educating them on why it was important and how it was not going to be tolerated. And our past, that hasn't worked. We feel like we just really wanted to put a little bit more opportunity with them and give them a lot more education. Now, the one part here where that is proposed is part of the Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative Program. That's not necessarily what we would adopt on ours, we may have a no policy, it's something we still need to finalize on where we want to go with it. But that was for the, that was more for the city one to be part of the Tobacco-Free Youth Initiative Program.
Let me add, I think that's a good point. I addressed it a little bit the first go-around. That, we've got three more people from the store and from the operation with us, including the two that are the subject of the failures in November and December. You can't bring a new employee in that will appreciate the significance of what's going on here with a business on the cusp of going out of business. You cannot teach that to a new employee. Having talked to these employees that were involved about what's going on, and the seriousness, and the gravity, and the magnitude, they get it. They've been through it. One has been to court already, the other goes tomorrow. A new employee, you, you can't teach that, you can teach them and tell them not to do it, but none of them will understand the significance of the consequence of failing again. So, that was part of the process of making the decision, other than they're two good people, they're two people who live in this community, understand what they did and didn't do, and very much need the job. So, it was, it was not just a, do we fire them or not fire them? There was more to it that went into that process and the decision-making. So, it's a good point, but we're hoping that we're making a better decision, that we have some people that understand and have sat through two council meetings now, and understand what carelessness, or laziness, or whatever word you choose can result in. So, is it the right decision? I guess time will tell if they're able to continue. But like he said, they've terminated in the past, and it just resulted in a new employee and having to train them all over again. Hopefully, that, that helps a little bit. I wanted to clean up just a little bit. We're still working on the card reader, that's been implemented since December, late December. So, everything reads. Now, if your ID has been in your wallet, and in and out, and in and out, and in and out, sometimes that strip gets a little worn. So, they do still have to hand-read those. And one of the things we're working on is, number one, tying the card reader to the terminal. So, it, it won't function, won't open unless it's an eighteen or better. For those that, that don't read, we're working on a way at the register, apparently, the technology is there, to capture an image. So, you have to read it, check the date, and capture the, of image of the ID, so that when they come in to audit, or if this program gets off the ground and you come in to audit, there are records of every sale. It's either going to be on the electronic reader, or there's going to be a capture that attaches to that sale. Any of you that have managed employees, hired employees, trained employees, educated employees, you understand that there are still mistakes that happen. People make mistakes. So, we're trying to figure out every angle to close the gaps, and take as much margin of air out as possible. And so, those are the things that we're working on, that the interface between the reader and the POS, it's not an overnight solution. We've been working with different people to see if there's a product that exists, and also, working with someone that could provide some programming proprietary to tie those things together. So, that was something that didn't, we didn't quite get to, and I wanted to make sure you understood that they were doing that.
All right, thank you. Mike, you have?
David, I've got a, I've got a question. If I remember correctly, at the last council meeting, when we were talking about the five compliance checks failed within the four years, you said that at least one of those was educational. Can you remind us which ones were educational?
Councilmember Freer, I believe the one on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, which was educational, and the one in Bank in two thousand and fourteen was not, and the one on May sixth, I believe, was also educational.
I guess the reason I'm asking the question is because city ordinance says three failures within a two-year period can result in a suspension, or a termination of the license, and, and while educational ones are being considered, it looks like, within that two years, which is why they could be up for license revocation. And so, I think I know where Chief Peterson sits on this, but Chief, do, when you, when they were doing the educational ones, it was at the intent to use that as a reason, as a potential for revoking somebody's license?
To be honest with you, that was, there was no intent, per se. Honestly, when we started looking back, that's when we started seeing that there was that pattern with the actual mandated, and then the educational. And so, when you go back, when you look at the educational and the mandated, there are five failures, actually, there's six failures in, it looks like about four years.
C five, okay. Thank you.
Just a clarification, do we have to open up a public hearing, or are we just having a?
Mayor members of the council, it's a hearing, not a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who you'd like to hear from, you could certainly open it up for any public comments as well.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that before we keep going down here. I guess, you know, personally, I appreciate the efforts that you went through here recently. I think it shows a, you know, a huge change of attitude, and I think you've done a lot of footwork that the, you know, the city's going to have to avoid if we want to bring this to a workshop as far as the tobacco initiative goes. So, I appreciate the efforts. You know, I understand the struggles of running a business, and, and compliance is everything else, but obviously, it's a huge priority with, you know, alcohol and tobacco to assure that that's taken care of. I guess, a question for the chief is, have we gotten complaints from the public of underage sales? Is that spurred some of these, or is it just mandatory routine-type things, you know, compliance within the city's, the police program to do that?
Yeah, as I mentioned, quite a few months ago, that there were quite a few complaints from parents of, you know, juveniles that were found to have ESIGs and these products at home, we found them at schools, and that was one of the reasons why it definitely spurred the, the check in November.
Was that, was there information where that was coming from? Was it a local shop, or?
All we were told was, you know, the kids were pretty reluctant to say, but they stated it was from ESIG shops in, in Forest Lake, so that's why the compliance checks were completed.
Rick, was there any chance that an adult was buying this stuff for underage people?
We were told, and, you know, I don't, I don't know the, the kids' names or anything like that, not that I would say that here, anyway, but the school resource officers were the ones that were, had heard it right from the kids, when the kids, a couple of them actually came forward and were honest and said, yeah, that they ended up buying them, yeah.
Andy, you have a question?
The other concern I have is, you know, kids being kids, the word gets out real quick, who, who might sell, or we got a better shot of someone selling to you. So, that puts the illness on people like you, the, unfortunately, they'll come to your store because, hey, my buddy Johnny got it over here, so I got a shot at going there. And I don't know if that puts you at a disadvantage, because you've got more kids trying to buy from you than some of the others places that were checked. That might be part of the problem.
Ms. Fensel, I, were you, did you receive the video?
Correct.
And was that shared with council?
There's just surveillance footage of the juvenile going into the store and purchasing, and then surveillance footage also before of someone else going in and purchasing, and not being able to make the purchase after their ID was checked.
So, let me recap. On the December two thousand and seventeen fail, we went back and looked at the same salesperson. A young lady comes in and wants to buy something, and is asked for an ID, turned away and asked to leave the store. Within eighteen to twenty minutes, another young lady comes in and asks about buying some product, and is ID'd. The ID is asked for, received, reviewed, and given back to her, and a sale was made. It's the same salesperson within an eighteen to twenty-minute period. The intent is not to sell to minors. If it was, he would have sold to the first one. The intent is not to. Now, in discussing this with the salesperson, he said, I've done it countless times, looked at the ID, there was something about the ID, I don't, I can't, but he made a mistake. I've asked to see the ID, I've asked to see a photo of the young lady that was used as the secret shopper, and been denied that. I've asked for it even redacted, and I've been denied that. So, I think, you know, from an intent standpoint, they don't want to be known as the place for young people to go to, and that's an example, I, the best I can do right now, with surveillance footage that we've given staff, to show that the same sales guy wasn't intending to do it. Now, how that mistake was made, I don't know, because you can see him ask for it and look at it. But that's as far as our analysis can go until we see more about that, that incident. So.
Go ahead, Matt.
I have a question on process, following a little bit on Councilmember Freer's clarification of the law. So, there's kind of embedded in your question, the, do the educational checks count, and that's something we'll have to decide here tonight. But say that we were to renew a license, what is the time period for the, the two-year period? So, they had two, November, the November seventeen failure, December seventeen failure, neither of those were education checks. Does the clock then start with November of two thousand and seventeen, and they have until November of nineteen to, so, anything that fails between, it's an automatic, no council decision, it's an automatic revocation?
Mayor members of the council, whenever you're revoking a license, there does need to be due process. So, even though the code says it's a revocation, is the presumptive penalty, there would be a, a hearing process, just like tonight, before you could revoke.
But it's not a renewal hearing, it's a revocation hearing?
At that point, it would be a revocation hearing.
Thank you.
So, when minors go into an establishment and present them with a, assuming a valid ID, but underage, is there any way to, for you guys, or for, you know, can we require those to be collected and turned over to the police department? I mean, I feel they're as responsible as anybody is if they're, they're also breaking the law. And how do we deal with them? Chief, do you have, is there a penalty for them? Is there a fine, anything for a juvenile or an underage person attempting to buy liquor or tobacco?
Yeah, they can definitely be issued a citation, depending on their age, and/or referred to the Lake Center Youth Service Bureau for attempting to purchase tobacco products, same as attempting to purchase alcohol.
I mean, if the word gets out that, you know, we're requiring establishments to hold those IDs, I don't think we'll have too many minors going back in there and try that as well.
Mr. Mayor, the, the card reader, if it reads it, and you're under eighteen, it captures the identity, the identification of that person. So, it would be information that they are collecting, whether it's inadvertently or on purpose, but it's collecting it. And if it's one of those that doesn't read, they're going to hopefully be able to capture an image. If that helps, Chief Peterson and their program, if that's what they want to do, certainly would cooperate, but that, that information's being captured.
That card scanner's capabilities, you can set it up to thirty days to keep that card on file. You can adjust it to how long you want to keep the card, so anybody you scan. So, up to thirty days, we could have it on file. So, once weekly, send off an email or what have you to police chief or anybody else. It's the same here, it's all the people that came in underage and attempted to buy this week.
I think word would, word would get out, you're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I think that would be a huge deterrent, right?
Absolutely.
The only comment I'd like to make is that I agree with their attorney, that there's no better training than going through this legal process. And I think that it happening again with these folks would be pretty darn remote, just because of what's happened, and, and going through this process. You know, we deal with employees all the time, we don't, our problem if our employees make a mistake, it's not a misdemeanor, you know, unless, unless it was some kind of a theft or something. But we deal with that stuff on kind of a daily basis, too, and usually, it triggers a kind of a store meeting or something, at least there's a, a process that we're going through that, that helps. But the new employee thing, I, I agree with the fact that you got two employees that are well-trained now, no question about it.
And I'd like to, you know, I talked to the two of you for about a half hour one day on the phone. I'm sorry, I was not able to stop by that day, but the training program that you've set up, as I said, is, is a good training program, but it's not about necessarily just training them. And I agree with what Councilman Husnick just said, that best training program is up sitting here right now, and so, I commend both of you for having them go through this as well. My, my, as I told you on the phone, my, my one concern is that just doing an online training, you know, a couple of times a year, and not making sure that you guys are constantly talking to them about it, following up and things like that, just means that I have to sit down and watch something on the computer. So, making sure that there's, there's ongoing follow-up, not just in the employee handbook, this needs to be a constant mantra from you, from the two of you and your managers, to make sure that this doesn't happen.
And one part to work with that is going to be the ninety days. I know it's probably not as frequent either, but ninety-day internal checks, and everyone passed or failed will be reviewed with that employee one-on-one as well.
Correct.
It, it's interesting you say that, Councilmember Freer, because one of, in talking to the salespeople that were involved in the November and December incidents, both of them repeated several times how they're constantly reminded of this by these two guys, and by store managers and other management. And so, yes, but obviously, for whatever reason, it didn't work on two occasions here with these two people, but that was one thing that they told me over and over, that they were constantly reminded, and that's one of the reasons why they feel really bad about putting their employers in this position. That was what was told to me. And if you want to hear from them, they're here. And if you want to hear from them, they're here. So it's up to you at any point in this phase or the next phase.
I just have a question for Aaron. I guess, you know, you have the license renewal hearing, the license penalty hearing, and the consideration of the license penalty, are these three separate issues? I mean, as far as the motions are in your concern? They are, okay. I'd make a motion that we renew their license as of tonight.
Or yeah, as of, it could be as of January first.
Okay, well, I guess that would be case, I guess it would be retroactive to January first, they've been operating without it.
All right, we have a motion, I'm looking for a second. Well, for plenty of discussion, I'll second that, where you stand. I'll open up the floor for discussion. Go ahead, Aaron.
I'd be in favor of renewing their license with conditions that any occurrence would...
Hey, Ben, let me speak to him, can I? No, I can't.
In a minute, I'll open it up for the public, but let's work through this.
Real quick.
All right.
One minute.
Yep, just, let's get through this first, so.
But I would like, I would like to, I hadn't renewed license with conditions, and I don't know, does the next violation, even without conditions, automatically cause a revocation? So you wouldn't need to condition, or must we put that in there?
I think we would have to have a hearing, no matter what.
Sorry, Mayor members in the council, yes, there has to be a hearing before there be a revocation. The presumptive penalty would be revocation. As far as conditions are concerned, you could certainly condition the license on installation of some of the technologies that they're mentioning, or other initiatives, point-of-sale software, or things like that, that would satisfy the council, that that would make the license conditioned in an appropriate manner here.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm not in favor of doing a revocate, excuse me, a renewal with conditions. And the reason is because the conditions only last one year. So they only last until the next license renewal on January first of next year, and so therefore, it's really only in place for the rest of this year, and it doesn't continue going forward after that. So I would rather renew the license and look at any, you know, I think what they've put together for training programs, demonstration of what they've learned from these last two failures, if you will, but also look at the penalty phase and what happens there. But I don't think that renewal with, with conditions actually helps the city long-term, it just finishes up the year, that's it.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Freer, I think, I think we have got a challenge just beyond just the business that's in front of us. I think, and we did last meeting renew without condition, we haven't yet done a penalty phase on the other business. So I think it's worth workshop conversation on, you know, maybe some expansion or change of ordinance that's more universal.
That's why my motion's...
I think there's, I guess I'm, with the part that maybe, to kind of boil it all down, the part that makes me nervous about doing or uncertain undoing conditional is we just didn't do it on the last one. And there were, you know, opportunities for some conditions on that as well.
But they didn't have five violations either?
I know, but there were multiple in the ninety-day, I mean, both, both stories are either multiple in a short period of time or multiple over a long period of time, and I'm not sure either one is...
Not to get into, not to get into the other situation right now, but that one was only open, I believe, if I remember correctly, since October.
Yes.
So as a, as a result, it's, you know, you can argue.
Well, I do like the program that they laid out, and I think...
I do, too.
You know, the intent is there. Anybody can make a mistake, you know, anybody can have a bad day. Look at the Vikings. Don't go there.
You, let's stop laughing real fast. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think, you know, collecting the names of those underage crying to buy, so that, you know, that can be dealt with either through the schools, through their parents, through the Youth Service Bureau, or like, you know, wherever it's appropriate. I think that's more valuable than, you know, a lot of other things. I just, I don't see an intent by anybody to want to sell to underage, especially with the pain you have to go through dealing with us, anyway, so. Yeah, there are penalties, and we all face those parts, we'll deal with that next. But, yeah, I would, I, we've got a motion for renewal on the table right now. It was seconded, I guess, by me for discussion, so it's at this point. There's no further discussion? A call for a vote for renewal of our license as of January first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstains? All right, got through one of three.
That's the right thing, Ben.
Oh, thank you.
Right on the front there, the fact that last, the last meeting, you gave the other company, and then it was three months, two violations, you only canned one, you had to check one in a Taka, and then now you put these guys through the damn ringer, so let's not be hypocrites. If you can renew the one last week, there's no excuse not to renew this one this week.
Thank you, Alvin. All right.
Look at the nice shoes these guys got.
This guy's contributing to the community, too. That's something that helps. This city needs people that are putting back to the community. At least this company is probably helping. I don't smoke, never did, but I, something that this city needs, businessmen that are contributing to the economy of the city, and these guys, I think you guys put them through the ringer tonight.
Thank you.
You've done a hell of a good job, and the fact that what you did last week, the meeting, you're open, but these guys did a good job to bridge you in.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to number two, license penalty hearing. So open that up to discussion.
Bridgette, can you? Go through the penalty thing, just for my sake, that's nothing else, I mean.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So there are kind of two pieces of the puzzle here. The first was the renewal hearing, next is the penalty phase. This is a similar hearing process where the council needs to make a record, accept certain evidence into the record. Since you've already done that, you could make a motion to accept the same record, if you would, that was just entered and created for the license renewal hearing. Then same opportunity to be heard by the license holder. And then as far as the penalties are concerned, the city does have a presumptive penalty schedule and minimum penalties. In this case, the violation is being treated as a second violation within twenty-four months, in part because there was not sufficient records that we could find regarding communication with the license holder and any penalty imposed for that third violation, and within that twenty-four month period, and so, because there was never an opportunity to respond to that, never an opportunity for a hearing, that's why the city's taking the position that this is really the second in twenty-four months. The presumptive penalty for a second violation within twenty-four months is an administrative fine of $550 and a five-day license suspension. So that is the presumptive penalty in the city code. The council is free to, at its discretion, based on the totality of circumstances and evidence before it, deviate from that either up or down.
Thank you, Bridgette. Look for a motion to first accept the evidence that we had presented. In a second? Just to accept the...
I'll, I'll second, but I just want to clarify, it's the, the information that was presented in the, the previous hearing. Correct. Just want to make sure that every, that that was clear.
I just, I just want to get something, so it's, we're talking about a $550 fine, and then putting them out of business for a couple of days?
No, no, yeah, we're just looking to accept the evidence, the information that was presented before. We're not making any fine or penalty at this point.
Okay, I just want to make sure what the motion was.
Yeah.
So to clarify, I make a motion to accept the evidence.
And I, and I still second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's move on to the penalty part of this. I see no reason to not consider the $550 part of it. I have a huge problem with the five-day suspension, especially noting their willingness to work with us and going above and beyond what would be necessary at this point.
I agree, and I, I would, if you're looking for a motion, I would make a motion that we agree to the $550 fine and then not use the five-day suspension.
I'm sorry, did you make that as a motion or just a comment?
I did.
You did?
I did, I did as a motion.
Your Honor, if I may, because it is a hearing, we do need to provide an opportunity for the license holder to be heard, so I apologize for the deviation there, but I don't know if they have anything they want to add before the council...
Do you want to add anything to it?
Ask a lawyer if you want to add to it.
Would you like to tie that up, Mayor?
There are a couple, there are a couple points I'd like to make in addition, and I think it's important to go back and revisit some things, try not to plow the same ground we did on the renewal. And maybe it gets a little more legal, and maybe a little more technical, because this is a penalty phase. So in preparing for tonight, I went back and took a look at some old workshop records, council meetings, things like that. And I think it's probably good to get some observations out on the table. Number one, I'm, I don't, please don't take this as lecturing or preaching to you, but I think a decision has to be made on what's going to, what effect or impact these educational compliance checks, what is the impact legally? Now, I understand there wasn't notice given, but probably there wasn't notice given on the first one, because they were being treated as educational only. Second, I went back to early 2016, and remember that these shops are fairly recent, 2012 or so. So everybody's kind of learning, it's a process to get up to speed, and you're still learning on it. So are they. In April of 2016, there was a workshop, and the materials provided by staff said that the current ordinance does not address licensing of establishments selling electronic delivery, delivery devices and related e-juices, which were also referred to as nicotine juice. If you go back and look at your ordinance, which is what we've been dealing with, the word nicotine doesn't appear back before that. It says tobacco and tobacco leaf products, which have never been sold at my client's business. So that's one observation. In June of 2016, again, staff materials said they were proposing to add electronic delivery devices and nicotine, quote, thereby requiring e-sig shops to obtain licenses. Now, these were workshops that were held in 2016. My client's been licensed since 2012. And I would caution you when you go back, if you have time and you want to go back and look, if you look at redlined ordinances, be careful. Because the redlined ordinance that's on your site right now is not, if you take out the redlining, is not what existed pre-2016. There are instances where nicotine is added to different paragraphs, but not shown as a redline addition, that didn't exist back in 2016. And so after two workshops, there was a council hearing in November of 2016, and staff presented that there were going to be, there were several expanded definitions that were included in the new ordinance. And I also, a couple of observations I made from that council meeting. Councilmember Iger made a good point at that one as well, about who is paying the fine, is it the salespeople or the licensee? And because, in his words, it's the employee that is violating the ordinance, which is true, although if it was a violation, I'm not so sure, in 2016, because of the status of the ordinance then. Couple other observations from that, that meeting. I couldn't catch his last name, he's no longer on the council, Rich, he used to sit. He said, in the materials, he said, I see a report from the FDA that there was one violation in the last four years. And city staff at that point in time said that's the FDA's compliance checks. Local compliance checks showed fifteen violations in the last five years. This was in 2016, so I'm not sure what was all was included, because there wasn't licensing till 2012, I think, for the e-sig side. So, but there was a discussion about increasing penalties, and I think Mr. Councilmember Freer was, I think his words were, this is about the only time I agree with big government.
That's right. I was actually going to repeat it.
And he was hoping for significantly more penalties. But one of the comments that the other council member made was, we're looking at, well, we looked at fifteen violations or fails in five years, but the comment was made, in the last two years, we're doing much better. And the comment he raised was, we're, we're looking at increasing the penalties, yet our compliance is getting much better under the current penalty requirements. So, again, our intent, and certainly my clients', is not to get up here and try and make this into a legal deal, but I think it is important to make those observations, that it was even city staff that was presenting throughout 2016 about whether the e-sig or vape shops, or whatever, e-nicotine juice, or whatever they were calling it, it appeared that the ordinance didn't even apply during that time period. It was adopted in November, and it was published in December of 2016. So we've talked some about 2015, and 14, and 13, and going back, but it might be that the 2017 is, is the universe we should be looking at.
Can I get you to wrap it up fairly quick here?
Sure.
Thank you.
But now before I get to use my proverb. I read a lot, and this is one that I think might tie in. Certainly, and I'm not sure if it was real clear, but this program that they've kind of, we, they've done a lot of work, but I worked with them on it, as possibly being useful to the city in a workshop in the future. Certainly, they're not telling you you need to do it, but they went through and did the work and put it together and copied from other cities and other programs, trying to find things that might work, because apparently you do have a, a problem, as we saw in December. So the proverb, which I believe is an American Indian proverb, but although I think I found a couple of places where either Thomas Jefferson or Benjamin Franklin tried to take part of it, was tell me and I'll forget. Show me and I may not remember. Involve me and I'll understand. That's what these guys would like to do. You can lean on them, they'll be at the workshops, they'll work as an interface between other e-sig shops in town, they're willing to do that. What I would suggest, and talk to Mike and Tim about this, is for a penalty, I believe the dollar amount is $550. They would suggest that as a fine, and if in the future you, at a workshop, when you discuss this and work with them, if you decide to implement this voluntary program to try and get compliance with sales to minors, they would donate $1,000 to get that program off the ground, in addition. So certainly any questions of Mike or Tim, or any of their staff that's with me tonight, or myself? But I think the bigger issue, the bigger problem overall tonight is trying to find a way to stop the sales to minors, wherever they're occurring, and maybe this might be a good start for it.
All right, thank you.
My, my motion stands. And I'll repeat it, the motion...
And I'll repeat it, the motion was to to use the $550 fine, but not have the five day penalty period.
I think everybody expects me to be the big government extremist in this, in this case. Tape is a wonderful thing, isn't it?
Mike, we have, we do have a motion, so we need to get a second.
I thought there was a second already.
Uh, no, I don't think we've had a second.
Perfect, that'll shut my mouth.
Does anybody want to forward this?
I'll second Sam's motion for the sake of discussion.
Thank you, Ed, go ahead, Mike.
I, I, I can't vote for not having a suspension of the license. I understand, and I frankly, I agree with what you presented, that there, I remember those workshops and I remember the reasons that we're talking about the e-sigs and the juices and things like that. So I frankly agree that there wasn't necessarily an ordinance in place that covered that at that point in time. So in my mind, this is a second violation and in my mind, there has to at least be some type of suspension of the license for a period of days. And, and you're correct, I did propose a much higher amount of a fine and more days. So I would be very inconsistent if I voted for this, the way it's currently constructed, so.
All right, thank you, Mike.
So I appreciate everything that you have done since and appreciate and trust that you have gotten the message and that we have an active partner. The challenge for me is that the employee has a legal process and the employee has a, now a misdemeanor potentially on their record and that has some permanent ouch. In my opinion, the way that you kind of really send that message to businesses through some sort of permanent ouch. And I don't think $550 frankly does it. I don't know whether it's a five day suspension, a 10 day suspension, our guidelines that were thought out that are in front of us as a five day, and that's what I would support.
All right. Well, I guess as, as far as I'm concerned and, you know, I think maybe this is where me and Sam are, are looking from the same angle, but you know, running a business, no one has an intent, or hopefully they never have an intent to sell something where they shouldn't. Intentional or not intentional, you know, things do happen. Whether this was beyond their control or not is, is still questionable. But I think they've stepped up to make some good changes and I think their intent is to, you know, continue those changes. Shutting them down for a period of time, just, I don't think benefits. I, I think as we move into the future, we need to look at how, you know, how do we address the problem? Not just fine the businesses, but you know, are all these businesses, are, can we require them all in a, in their license renewal to get the technology? I don't think the cost is excessive for any or anybody that wants to be in business to get that type of technology and to be able to report to proper authorities, people who are trying to acquire these products illegally. You know, drugstores take your license down when you try to buy cough syrup. I mean, it's, it's common wherever we go anymore. So I think, you know, looking at this as an opportunity to, to go from an adversarial point to a, a cooperative, something that's going to benefit everybody. There's still going to be businesses that are causing a problem and we have to deal with, but you know, I, I just see an intent of, you know, members of the community to, you know, sell a product and, and yeah, they've, they've made a mistake, but shutting them down just, I don't think helps. No different than, you know, don't fire the employees because they made the mistake, but educate them, reward them when they do good. I think we have to learn by that same type of philosophy is, you know, you know, we're not just gonna fire, you know, kick you out, you're done and you're out of business, but work with them. I do believe there's a fine involved and, you know, if, if they make another mistake. Yeah, I mean, then, you know, then we got to really question if their intent is, is what they're saying or not, but. Anyway, I'm bad one on, no. Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I would just like to add on that it's difficult to run a business and Ben, you and Sam both run businesses, so you face it more than Mayor or myself. We have, I have employees, but they don't work directly, I don't own the business. They impact my business, but I don't own it. But the whole problem with this, and I guess maybe it's because of my age, this e-sig thing, I don't even know. It looks like municipalities are first feeling their way out on this thing, whether or not it should even come under a tobacco thing. I don't know, but it does. So unfortunately, they face some stiffer penalties than other kinds of businesses. Certainly, there's other businesses that can rip off customers and face no penalty whatsoever. And can do far more damage and face no penalty. So because they're so new, I mean, the business is so new, not their business, but the type of business. I guess I'd be more lenient and forgo, I kind of agree with Sam. I don't think we should be shutting them down. I think we should stick with the first half of the penalty and dispense with the second half of the penalty. So that's kind of where I stand.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion in a second to, or?
Your Honor, if I just, one piece of information I did want to share. There is, there was initially a letter sent with that November compliance check. In December, there was a financial penalty imposed that has not yet been paid. They have 30 days to do so, so there is an outstanding balance of $250 from the previous violation. And then I would just note for the record that the two violations we're talking about did occur in 2017. So irrespective of sort of the ordinance change process and some of the language that may or may not have existed prior to that adoption, the violations that you have before you tonight, deal with the existing code, which clearly defines nicotine as a product that requires, for lack of a better term, a tobacco license.
And weren't we talking, one of those was educational?
No, that was not.
No, not in 2017, Your Honor.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Bridget.
I, I would have included that in my motion had I, I guess I.
You can amend your motion.
Yeah, I can amend it, but I'm sorry, I didn't know about that, but did you have something to say about it, sir?
Just wanted to follow up on that penalties that we haven't paid on our first meeting with Undem. With Mr. Undem, we did discuss those penalties and he said at this point, let's hold off on paying of any fines or penalties until we found out if our tobacco license was going to be renewed or not. He said he wanted to get that stage taken care of first before we did anything with penalties. By no means will we be skipping on anything like that, we will take care of whatever we need to.
I'll include it in my motion that we include the $250 on top of the $550 then. So that's my amended motion.
And you accept a amendment?
I'll accept it.
I'll amend it.
All right, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. So then.
Mr. Mayor, can I say a couple of words directly? Be quick.
All right.
Okay.
So now we go on to section C.
First of all, I hope that you make sure the money gets in the bank. That's important, you guys need money, you're spending it like crazy. Anyway, I also wanted to give kudos to the guy that, the guys that were out plowing. They did a heck of a job on my road. Now, I'd give you my address, but you'd probably want to drop in for a visit and we're too busy for company. So anyway, give them guys congratulations, they did a great job.
I heard a lot of compliments on the plowing this time, so. In fact, I already let Dave know about that. So now we have to move on to number three, consideration of license penalty. Yeah, that was completed. Okay. Okay, that hearing and penalty together, okay. So now we're going on to Cloud, uh, Cloud X Vape hearing?
Correct. Mayor, members of the council, Cloud X Vape LLC DBA, Cloud X Vape is before the council tonight for a hearing concerning violations of its tobacco license. Cloud X Vape is a tobacco license holder for the premises located at 843 West Broadway Avenue in Forest Lake, Minnesota. Diane Hughes is listed as, on the license application as the applicant and owner of Cloud X Vape. Cloud X Vape was served with the notice of this hearing on January 10th, 2018. The alleged tobacco license violations occurred on November 19th, 2017 and December 19th, 2017. In both cases, a tobacco compliance check was conducted by the Forest Lake Police Department with the assistance of an underage buyer who entered the licensed premises and was sold e-juice, which contains nicotine and is a tobacco product. Specific information about each violation is included in your packet. If anyone would like to make a motion, I would offer exhibits one through nine into evidence. They're included in your packet, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Section 11806 and 11811 lists various acts which constitute a violation of a license holder's tobacco license and include the legal sale of nicotine to a minor. Section 11809 of the city code holds that licensees are responsible for the actions of their employees in regards to the sale of nicotine by their employees and illegal sales by a license holder's employees are to be considered a sale by the license holder. Section 11812 establishes minimum penalties for the violation of a tobacco license. The minimum penalty for a second violation within 24 months is an administrative fine of $550 and a five day license suspension. The council may impose penalties exceeding these, these penalties and impose other conditions when appropriate. That's all I have, Your Honor. I am unsure, I'm unsure whether they have a representative from Cloud X Vape is attending this evening.
Yeah, come on up. If you have something to say, if not. Anything else, Bailey?
Uh, no, back to you.
All right, thank you. So consideration of penalty here, so anybody want to?
I'm in the same spot I was.
Yeah, I was, this was, how many times of this one? How many times did they have a problem?
Twice.
Four, okay.
Two.
Twice.
Oh, twice.
Um, both on November 19th and December 19th of 2017.
And Your Honor, members of the council, I do believe that they have not yet paid their $250 penalty either that was imposed after that November compliance check, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
I know there was a lot of discussion last time at the workshop about what they had, what they were doing to comply. And I don't recall all the words that were spoken there, but seemed that it's a lengthy process there too.
So again, there, we haven't. So the violations are within 24 months, it's not a calendar year per.
Correct.
Okay. And we're looking at $550 and is it?
Five day license suspension, yeah, similar to what we just discussed.
And then the $250 that they haven't paid yet, that's, that was my understanding.
Okay. Any thoughts on where we go with this one?
I'm, I'm troubled by this one because of the duration the business has been. Similar to my comments when we had the hearing, typically a business opens on their best behavior and we've had two violations in 90 days. So I, I would be a proponent of the penalty as stated for phase two or as a second violation. I'll make a motion that we impose a violation of the $550 fine plus the $250 that hasn't been paid and a five day license suspension.
Second. All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion on this one?
I don't, I'm not sure how we could possibly do that and be fair with everybody here. That's, that's the only thing I have to say about that.
I have concerns with that too. I guess question for the license holder or renewer, are you taking any steps as far as software or training or anything? Can you kind of speak to what you've done?
Sorry, I didn't think I was going to come and speak. We've been doing the same thing. I've been talking to all my employees on the same regards of what they're kind of going on with. As far as systems go, we don't really know that they're working on, but we are going to get it and see how it goes. Technology screws up too, so. I just think that it should be fair, I don't know, I'm doing the same thing they are doing. I'm literally training them in and I've been talking to my employees nonstop about this whole thing. Cause I'm just, you riled up about this and this sucks. I really want this all just to change.
We really want a tour for the city and for the business. And to be honest with you, I never got a letter and I don't know why in November. The first time I even heard about it is when, I don't know, are you the one that sent it to me email? I got an email like the day, like the Friday before the first meeting that we came here the last time. So I don't know where the holdup is, I never even knew anything about November there being, being any kind of a problem. And I didn't even know anything about it until like three days before the last time I came before you.
Were tickets issued in November to employees? Weren't there tickets issued to employees in November?
Yes, correct.
Mayor and members of the council, I would like to mention that I had sent that letter on November 19th via certified. And last week I did get it returned as unclaimed from the post office and it was sent to the business location from here on out since at the last meeting, Ms. Hughes had mentioned that she didn't receive anything. I had sent both letters to her residence as well as the licensed location. And emailed her letting her know that things were changed. Absolutely.
I just think it's kind of a slippery slope if we don't do exactly what we did the first time. That's my opinion.
I don't think we could, you know, I wouldn't be in favor of doing exactly what we did the first time. I, I, I think the scenarios are, are different enough. I, I think five days is is excessive. I would be okay with five days suspended for X amount of time if they have no other violation. A one day suspension, you know, something, I just, I, you know, five days is, is I, I think kind of brutal for somebody that's trying to run a business. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to see you guys put out of business any, anymore than anyone else. But there is technology out there and, you know, maybe part of that is, is getting it, not saying you're going to, but actually getting that within the next month or something. And again, I think we need to have everybody working to report minors that are coming in and other things like that as well.
I agree with that, I just want to make sure that we have been looking at technology. We haven't jumped the gun yet because we don't want to buy the wrong thing. So we're kind of looking at all that, a few of us are, so I just didn't want to jump into it, as far as that goes.
We do have.
But we have been, we have been talking with them and that's the best we can do right now, but like, I don't think that, they even probably got their technology yet. We're all kind of looking into it. So as, as far as that, we have been looking into, that's all I can, I just.
I'm sure whatever it costs is probably going to be less than being shut down.
No, easily, and I agree with that, I just didn't want to buy the wrong thing and have it happen. So I just want to look into the product first.
Mayor, you had, you had suggested a couple of things, I think one of them was maybe one day, let's talk through kind of what your.
I'm just throwing a few things out there.
Yeah.
I mean, one day, I, we, I've dealt with it, we did it with a Lakeside Deli at the time and, you know, I, I just struggle. I mean, a week is, is, is significant. It, it wasn't, you can't say they didn't know that, I mean, that is the penalty, but I think it's just excessive for, for what's happening here. And, you know, having that kind of suspended, you know, you know, five day penalty or, you know, we'll shut you down for one day if it happens again, you know, it's, you know, moving on, something, you know, that, that is within, you know, realistic punishment, but yet not really almost forcing somebody out of, out of business. Mike, you add that first.
Yeah, I kind of struggle with the fact that, if I'm reading you correct, you want to penalize them more because they're a new business and should be putting their best foot forward. And I'm kind of the other mind, the business that's had five years of experience. Has probably gone through some of these things and should be a better business than a new business. business starting out who doesn't know how to deal with some of the problems we're having. So, I kind of lean towards the business, the new business should kind of get more of a grace period than an old business.
I guess I go back to, my position is consistent on both of them. I think there's, I'm personally not advocating that either be different, but that's not the way the vote occurred on the last one. I am open to, you know, something, whether it's one day, three days, let's have that conversation of what that looks like.
Okay.
One of yours, just, I think one of your concerns was if it occurs again, and I think our ordinance covers that in that if it does occur again in a, you know, in a very short period of time, over twenty-four months, we'll be sitting in a different situation with a vacation. So, I think that's covered. I think the question is, what's the penalty?
Can I just make one suggestion, Mayor and members of council, on the penalty phase? Could you suggest that you could do the same financial penalty, put a five-day suspension down there, but let that go away if a card reader is installed, so they're on the same plan as like what they have. So, basically, they have a five-day suspension penalty. Say after six months, if they have a card reader in place, because they don't currently have a card reader in place, that five-day suspension would then therefore go away. So, it kind of incentivizes them to get the card reader in place. You know, if they don't have the card reader in place in six months, then we would go out and implement a five-day suspension of the license.
I'm in the same spot that I was. I'd rock solid on the five days.
I like, you know, the...
How expensive is the card reader that? Anybody can speak to that?
Regular retail was seven hundred on it. We got ours on Amazon, came to store in two days at five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, so it'd be in essence, no different than adding another five hundred dollars and fine, but been put to better use.
I have another question for the attorney. Are we able to impose a penalty after a six-month, if we were to say a condition of the card reader is installed and operational that within six months we couldn't do a penalty if it weren't within that period?
I think you need to establish tonight what your options are. So, you could say a five-day suspension state or, you know, commencing July first. However, the suspension shall be waived or not going to affect provided there is an operational card reader. We need to figure out what the exact language is. But you need to say today, you need to pick a date. And likewise, if you do decide to impose a suspension, the council should pick the dates for that suspension tonight as well.
Okay.
We do have a motion and a second on a five-day suspension, so maybe we should take a vote on that, and then if not, we can get back to the real discussion. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. All right, motion fails. So, five hundred to seven hundred dollars for a card reader, I would, I would, I would hope you would have that installed and operational within a week.
I agree. I can do that.
And I think if we do that, fines paid for within a week, and then it's just a question of if that's done, we're being fair with the two of them or any business.
I think, you know, if this would satisfy everybody, I mean, these, the other folks, they already had that in place, really, that's with the most, too. If that was the case, then my motion would be that they pay the fine that they haven't paid yet, the two hundred and fifty dollars plus the five fifty, and that if they don't have the card reader by May first, that the five-day penalty is imposed. That's my motion.
By May first.
I'm sorry?
By May first or March first?
Okay, we'll amend it to March first, I will.
Okay, have a motion?
I'll second.
I think we're being fair with everybody at that. The scenarios are a little different, but, you know, I know you don't agree with it, Mike, and I can appreciate that, too.
We know where I stand. It's perfectly fine.
Exactly.
Same.
All right, all those, so the motion is five hundred and fifty dollar fine plus back fine plus...
Plus they would have until March first. If they don't have it implemented by March first, then the five-day penalty would take effect.
One clarification, we would need to set a date for those, that five days. Would you want to do that now, sir?
It would commence on March first.
Okay, thank you.
The fine would commence, the five days would commence on March first.
Okay. All right, all those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Can I say one last thing, please? Is there a specific card reader, so I don't get in trouble, you know, on the...
They have.
Is there something I can get up from you guys? It seems like you guys put the work in a fine in the right one.
There are new tobacco compliance department there.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
I would suggest before you order, just run it past Dan on the...
And once you get it installed, just give us a call. We'll go out and verify that it's, and we'll take that out and put that in the record for you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, can you take us through the street maintenance program?
Mayor, City Council, as part of the city's management and capital improvement plan, tonight we're here for the city council to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen street pavement maintenance project. Location map has been included in your packet information. Project budget is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. If you recall, seven hundred thousand, that is from your franchise fees, and because of utility work that's necessary in this area, twenty-five thousand is coming from your storm water utility fund, twenty-five thousand from your water fund, and twenty-five thousand from your sanitary sewer fund. Obviously, as we go through plans, we'll finalize project limits depending on how much utility work is necessary. And then within is the anticipated schedule of the project. Potentially, we could even move the possible award up to April twenty-third if things go well. Obviously, we'll have tighter restrictions in the contract this year, so we don't have to deal with other normal practices that we dealt with last year's project. The project won't be allowed to start in the core portion of the project until after July fourth, because this is a very important staging area for the Fourth of July and related businesses, so all those provisions will be within the contract. Once plans are developed, we'll bring forth for you guys to approve plans, so one more formal step before actually out for bid. So, tonight we're here to ask the city council authorization of plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen street pavement maintenance project.
Before we go ahead, I know there were issues last year with the contractor actually getting the work done in a timely manner. The provisions you're adding, you think they're going to add a lot of expense to it just by narrowing that? Are we going to eliminate, are we going to eliminate potential bidders because of that?
Every time you do, you know, enforce stricter restrictions, you run upon that. Obviously, that was out of the norm, first time since two thousand twelve we had a situation like that. We did reach out through the whole entire metro of wherever this contractor was working, and it was a routine thing that was occurring. Pretty much every job they had was well past liquidated damages. Certainly, we'll still have a flexible enough project because you're using local money and you're not tied to federal, state, or school, stuff like that. But we will provide a staging plan within it, therefore, they don't have to think too hard on, you know, how to bid it, but we'll tell them, you got to do portions like this in a certain, said timeframe. Certainly, we'll have provisions at the pre-construction meeting, talking about the importance of the staging, and not wanting to repeat kind of what went on last year. And, you know, there's no reason that what happened last year should have happened if they had all their stuff together. You know, it was the same contractor on Highway ninety-seven-two, and that one went way beyond its completion date. So, with that being said, you know, we'll go through a more formal check process on that. Even not even paying the contractor next year, I know the attorney probably doesn't want to hear that, but we did one payment at the end of the year. That's just, they didn't care. So, things we can do better, maybe we make formal requests into their bonding company if, you know, stuff like that. Certainly, you can increase liquidated damages and stuff like that. Also, set substantial completion date damages there and final liquidated damages and tie it to something legit, so, but it was not a good situation.
But, I mean, I mean, there was no warning signs either. I mean, this contractor's been doing work for...
Yeah, it's a big contractor. They have a lot of different types of services they provide. It's, you know, talking industry-wide, they took on way of work that they could handle, and thus, you throw in weather in there and number of subcontractors, and it was just the perfect bad storm. They had, they were tied into state, federal projects, school projects, tons of local road projects, but also spread out throughout the Midwest. So, when you're trying to jump from job to job, it's just not very efficient.
I just don't want to get us into a spec where, you know, we're going to end up paying a lot more for the same job.
And we're very cautious of that, too. So, once we start developing some of those provisions, the contractors we've had a good history with, we certainly will engage, what are your thoughts on some of the stuff that we're proposing, you know, prior to going out for bid? We do get some pretty open feedback from those contractors that are trying to do the right thing, so, you know, that's just another mechanism we can have an efficient project.
All right. Any other questions?
Neighborhood notifications, I think, were somewhat of a, I heard a lot of questions last year, and so at what point do we kind of send out notifications and start doing education so people understand what's coming up?
So, last year, obviously, there was a lot of first notifications as they kept moving the date back, but soon as we have the pre-con and know the contractor's schedule, we go send out personalized informal letters basically outlining what the project scope's going to be, the inspectors' contact, so that way the city doesn't get any phone calls and they would contact that person directly and go from there. And then as things proceed, additional notifications are handed out.
It'd be easier just to put that all on our website.
There's a lot of elderly people in some of these neighborhoods that don't use computers, so we actually go to their door and put it on their door, on their mailbox.
Website would help, too, though. We can do both.
Both would be good.
So, we need a motion on that, or? For motion for the two thousand eighteen street pavement project?
I'd make a motion that we approve that, his plan for the street pavement maintenance project, the authorization, preparation, to authorize the preparation of plans and specifications.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Aaron, you want to take us through the city attorney renewal?
Yep, Mayor and members of council, before you this evening is a legal services agreement with Levander Gillan and Miller for two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty to provide legal services, basically under the same terms that we currently receive service. Bridget's doing a great job for us, and so we really appreciate her efforts. Oversight on my part, but the, actually, the agreement did expire at the end of last year, and so before you, you basically have a renewal. Rates haven't really changed materially based on our current agreement, and while it is a three-year agreement, there is a provision within there for cancellation with thirty days notice if it's not working out or we're looking to go a different direction. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or recommend that you approve the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty legal services agreement with Levander Gillan and Miller.
Thank you.
Well, I just have a question for Bridget. Have you ever had enough of us yet?
I'm very happy to be here for Bridget.
I have one quick question. Aaron is one of the people who was on the committee to pick this firm. One of the things that we talked about originally was that we wouldn't know exactly how they were going to bill and things like that, and if they were going, if they were going to overbill or anything. But if I remember correctly, our, in the last couple of years, our budget has actually been in line with what we were doing previously or slightly over, but I don't believe that we've been overcharged, if you will, for every little thing.
Mayor and members council, no, that's kind of really good. You know, one thing that a lot of firms are not good with, and of course, you know, we had a different relationship previously and all that, but they do a very good job of understanding where our budget's at and keeping on target with, you know, about where that should be on a month-to-month basis and actually writing off a lot of work, you know, that they would, you know, the work is getting done, but they do write, you know, hours off on occasion, you know, just based on the focus of complying with the general legal services budget. Now, you know, we have it bucketed in different categories, of course, and so, you know, we've got general legal services and thirty-some thousand brings a, you know, a bell in terms of the number there, but then there's other, you know, developer reimbursement and specific project types of things. So, from that perspective, it's not really a lot different than the relationship we have with Boltman Mink. Kind of have this, you know, sort of not retainer, because it's not a retainer, it's a billing, but, you know, we've been able to stay on target with that, and then, but there's other areas in which they, they're able to bill to that, you know, has some return as well.
All right. For motion?
Mayor, I move that we renew the contracts with Levander Gillan and Miller for legal services.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You'll be with us for a while, Bridget.
Thank you, guys.
And the no-fault sewer coverage.
Mayor and members of council, this is, doesn't probably seem as exciting as it really is, but we do have the opportunity really for the first time to have no-fault sewer coverage. A lot of credit goes to Public Works staff and Dave Adams in particular for sort of the establishment of more regular maintenance practices within our sewer and water utilities, and based on that and the documentation and a lot of additional preventative maintenance that is structured into our work program now, we actually, for the first time, qualify for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust no-fault sewer coverage. Basically, what that does is it will cover claims by our residents if they have a sewer backup or water main backup irrespective of city negligence. So, in the past, or currently, the standard is that, you know, the city in some way has to be negligent in order for a resident to qualify for any reimbursement for a sewer backup or things along those lines. So, an example of that might be, you know, the city, you know, hasn't been by, you know, the city got an alarm, didn't respond to an alarm, and backed up. You know, that might be some negligence on our part. Doesn't account for electrical issues came through, we haven't been able to be as proactive with our maintenance practices as we should be. And so, in many cases, residents, you know, sort of these act of God types of claims that happen through, you know, whether it's the pumps back up due to infiltration or whatever the case is, there's many cases where residents have not received or been compensated for damages associated with backups. So, what this does, if you want to opt into this program at different coverage limits, you can provide that through the sewer and water funds and utilities, and up to ten thousand dollars of coverage for the resident would be charged at a dollar seventy-nine per connection or about ten thousand five hundred dollars per year, and then twenty, or you could opt in for twenty-five thousand dollars of coverage at twelve thousand three hundred dollars approximately, or forty, up to forty thousand dollars in coverage at fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars or so per year. And so, that's a policy question. If you're interested in opting into this coverage, you would consider adoption of, and this will be a revised resolution number based on the update from the previous council meeting that was canceled. If you wanted to opt into this, you would approve Resolution zero-one-two-nine-dash-eighteen-oh-one with a coverage limit assigned to that, and then we would update the resolution to reflect the coverage limit that you are interested in. So, I guess with that, again, really, thanks to Public Works for getting us to the point where we have this option, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at the moment. Dave, too, is here for any questions that you might have for him.
Go ahead. That chair, Aaron, would be passed. That charge, Aaron, would be passed on in a sewer bill, or?
So we would charge it through our sewer and water fund, and so you could make that assessment if you want to increase rates. You know, right now, I think it's something that's a low enough dollar amount where we could accommodate it between, a split between sewer and water relatively easily.
That was exactly my question of, is there room in the fund to hold this?
This would be a relatively de minimis expense for those funds.
Oh, Mike, go ahead, you had your hand up first.
Dave, how many people each year would benefit from this? You know, $10,000 or $15,000 isn't a lot of money overall, but if we're not having anybody claiming this, it doesn't really make sense either.
Yeah, it, it really depends on the year. I, I would say more likely on a water main break, we'll get a good majority of people.
What's a good majority, like, just?
We had one last year, the year before, in Bay Drive, and we had a pretty decent-sized break, and it got four houses all at once, you know, flooded the basements and all that. I mean, a finished basement, it's not gonna take much water damage to get to that limit.
Sounds good, thank you.
I think a lot of it just simplifies the claim. I mean, if a homeowner has a foot of water in their basement, if they get a sheet of paper that says, here, we've, we've kind of streamlined this process, you guys will be covered, it's at least one less thing they have to worry about.
So the coverage limit is per residential dwelling?
Correct. Or per claim.
Or per claim, is there a, are, do we have a, a cap as to, you know, is it a million dollars total, or, you know, if we have 25 claims under one, one break? I mean, do we hit a, a cap at a certain point?
Yeah, so overall, this is a coverage limit. I think that's a question we can explore. Otherwise, you know, the default would be our statutory liability limit, so you have like a, you know, within that, and maybe Bridget can recall those numbers off the top of her head, but you have an aggregate number for all claims, and then within that, you know, it has to be, it can be allocable to that overall number. Is it 1.50 million?
Yeah, 2.50.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, the overall cap is 1.5 million under your statutory liability limits, but per person, in this case, you know, they'd be limited to your coverage limit.
So page 174 of the Packard's, of Packet says neither governmental unit nor LMCIT will pay more than $250,000 for a water main break resulting in any single occurrence.
Yep, there you go, 250 it is.
So question, a question on this product, you know, rates are a reflection of utilization, so if we had, if we had a water main break and we max out at 250, you know, three years in a row, what hap, what happens in the future for us on this? Do we get disqualified from the program, rates go up, what are we committing ourselves to from a rate perspective?
You know, I guess, you know, it's a little bit of an unknown. We haven't participated in the program, and we're, we're just getting involved, but there's pretty specific underwriting criteria that we went through to, to get qualified, and that's universal from city to city, and so from that perspective, you know, I guess we, we made it through the underwriting criteria, and unless they were to change that, I don't know that claims history, they might question, you know, why we're making it through the underwriting criteria if we have all these claims, but I don't know, Dave, Dave provided a lot of the information for, you know, the specific things they're asking for, and I believe it was like our clay tile line jetting program was like the last thing that was holding us up from getting to that, but...
Yeah, and I, I think really that the whole, the end of the story is, League of Minnesota Cities is really good at what they do, and they're really good at denying a claim. You know, they'll find something that we weren't negligent to deny a claim where this is going the other way, kind of help the residents saying, all right, yeah, there was, there wasn't negligence, but we're still gonna, we're gonna pay your claim. So I, I mean, for all the backups I've had since I've been here, I don't think we've paid out, just because we've proven, like that water main break on Bay Drive, we had just had a, a company come out and listen to hydrants, look, listen to breaks, and we've done certain maintenance activities, so that was used to deny the claim, whereas this, you know, even if we've done all of our maintenance and something still happens, the homeowner will still receive the claim. So I mean, I, I think it's a compliment to League of Minnesota Cities that they do a good job to deny it, but this is, we've qualified for this to go the opposite way to help the homeowner out.
This is a situation where Dave's talking about a pretty significant water, you know, line break that we've had, and we've had some of those. There wasn't a lot of years ago, though, where we had some fairly significant sewer backups, and so, you know, again, like the water, maybe even, you know, a little tougher, I mean, it doesn't take long for those to translate into fairly significant dollars for one individual homeowner, and in a lot of cases, their, their insurance, unless they've made some elections for optional insurance, a lot of times that, it's not covered either, and so it's, in some cases, it's been fairly problematic for people.
All right. Go ahead, Ed.
Does this also cover commercial property, or is this residential only?
I think I have to look into that. I, my sense of it is, is that it's predominantly residential, but we could certainly find that out for you.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that as well.
The only thing I can, I, I wanna say about it is that if you got a finished basement and you get a sewer backup and $40,000 isn't even, that's peanuts.
And absolute peanuts.
And to that point, if we're going to do this, looking at the rates, take four times the coverage for only 50% more cost, go for the four, if we're gonna do it, go for the $40,000 high, go for the high limit.
I know that, and, 'cause I had a, what do you call it, not a sewer backup, but a sump pump?
Mm-huh.
And the insurance company just flat out at $5,000 to cap it, that's it, you're on your own after that. I don't have a finished basement, so I was fine, but if you had a finished basement, $5,000 is going nowhere.
That is a common limit.
Well, the lift stations we have, everything in this city, I think it's a matter of time before something really significant.
Well, we had that major storm last year. I mean, we were fortunate that we didn't have backups just because complete power loss and people weren't using their wells, but, you know, if there was single-phase power and everyone was able to use their well, I mean, we would've had, you know, multiple, multiple backups. I mean, we dodged a bolt there, but I mean, this would be something that would protect not, not only ourselves, but the homeowners as well, you know. Like I said, if, when you got a lot of water sewage in your basement, at least you have a peace of mind that, you know, the city's helping you out versus trying to not help you out.
Yeah. No, great job, you know, to get to this point, took a lot of effort, and I think we all appreciate that. I think we're all in agreement to go forward with this, and as a matter of the $40,000, the, the top one would be, I guess, where everybody's leaning here.
I'd make a motion that we approve...
Well, the only thing I was gonna add is, I'm in favor of it as long as we're not passing a cost along right now to the resident, saying, well, we're giving you this, but we're charging you for it. It'd be nice for them to get something back for their money.
Exactly. All right, Mar, are you gonna make a?
I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 0129-1801 at the $40,000 coverage level.
I'll second. Go, go ahead. Sorry, Ed. No, you, you got it.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pay the Winix supply invoices.
All right.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstained.
Where's the issue?
Brings us to staff updates.
Yeah, ours is a different cycle. He, he does it twice. I'm not finding this one once.
Mayor, Members of the council, I've got a couple of updates for you. For 2017, we ended the year with 473 calls. That was up from our previous record in 2011 with 444 calls. A big part of that increase were because of medical runs both in Forest Lake and Columbus, and we see with an aging community that that's probably gonna increase over the next few years as well. We're also starting on February 13th is our hands-only CPR. If you remember from a previous meeting, we talked about that being a partnership between the Forest Lake Lions, the Forest Lake PD, and Forest Lake Fire. The Lions provided a $6,000 donation in order to buy mannequins and training AEDs. Our first actual class will be February 13th at 7:00 PM, and residents can call the fire department to sign up for that. There is no charge, and the class lasts about an hour in length.
That class is where?
At the fire station, Station 1.
What's the age minimum?
Uh, we really haven't set an age minimum for that, probably around 10. I mean, we don't have a steadfast...
Teenage babysitter, it's not outside of that capability?
Yeah, absolutely, and we'll just have to give a couple of classes and see how that age works, and maybe at some time put up a, a minimum age.
Thank you.
Our pre-fire program will be starting on February 1st. We actually hired a temp employee, reached out to neighboring departments, and was able to hire somebody from a neighboring department that had 13 years' fire experience and is a certified fire inspector, so we're gonna start hitting a mix of Columbus and Forest Lake, and that all starts here this week. Hiring processes began. We did an orientation on the 18th, and our first, our physical agility test will be February 3rd, so we started out with 10 applications, and we have four people that went through orientation, so that's what's gonna get invited to the physical agility test. And then the last thing, a congratulation out to Forest Lake Deputy Fire Chief Doug Burgland. He, last month, Doug graduated from the Naval Postgraduate School with his master's in art degree in security studies, and that was an 18-month online and in-residence program, and Doug collaborated with Homeland Security officials from across the nation on policy, strategy, and organizational design challenges, and only 31 people, CHDS students earned that degree, so it's a pretty prestigious degree, and I was able to go out to California and watch him graduate.
Awesome.
So that's all I've got, unless you have questions for me.
Just one question, record 473 calls, how many for the storm, the tornado?
We had roughly about 40 that would have been related to that. The first initial was probably around 30, and then additional calls for the next few days for power lines down in woods and other trees leaning against power lines.
Thank you. All right, thank you all.
Thanks.
Dave?
Nothing significant tonight, can you say something for me?
No, just to reiterate, I think that, you know, your staff did a great job with the snowplow, the snowfall and, and getting our roads taken care of, so thank you very much for that.
I keep hearing also the rinks are in great shape, so nice work. Thank you.
And Dan?
I have a couple of updates. Last week, I gave a presentation to the Forest Lake High School Environmental Club as part of, I believe it was Project Yes, which is Youth Environmental Summit. I gave an update on what the city of Forest Lake is doing for green-stuff cities. I also gave a comp plan update to the group there, was well-received, so I spoke for probably about a half hour or so, answered some questions from some of the students there. LATV right now is currently recruiting for an admin assistant, and that should close this Friday, so they'll begin the interview process, so that was kind of a next-level restructuring for that group, so they're currently actively recruiting for an admin assistant. The new Arts in the Park signup form is gonna get released, and hopefully will go live in the next couple of weeks here with, with, once Jamie kind of runs through it. We basically, or I've streamlined the back end of that. Last year, we had credit card sale, our option that was available online, but what ended up happening was the vendor didn't have a good interface on the backside, so it ended up creating a lot of work and really slowed down the process, so when we're allowing resident or vendors to still pay with the credit card, they just need to do it in person, because we ended up looking at the data roughly only about a third actually paid with a credit card, anyway, most still paid with cash or check, so we kind of focused on those two this year to really streamline the approval process and how the form functions, but we wanted to maintain that credit card availability in case somebody don't want to pay with the credit card, so that should go live once, like I said, once Jamie reviews it. And then, final note, the bills for tonight's meeting are not in their normal location, they're actually next to Becky's desk in the vacant cubicle there, so she wanted me to let you guys know that that's where the bills are for signatures after this meeting.
All right, thanks, Dan. Just a question, Arts in the Park vendor signup, do last year's vendors get their same spots if they choose, or is it a first come, first served?
There is actually a spot on the form for if you're a returning vendor, you're, you're able to make a request for that. I don't believe Jamie has a policy where they're guaranteed the same spot. I think it's kind of looked at what the pool is every year, but we do have a spot in the forum that allows returning vendors to check a box, it creates a secondary, or a secondary pop-up shows up that says, any comments, if you wanna do a site's, you know, request at that point, they can put it in, but I don't believe Jamie has to follow those per the policy, but it is an option.
All right, thank you. Donovan?
Yeah, my update just involves the, the upcoming community conversations as part of our conference and plan update, and I invite you all to come. As Paul mentioned earlier, the first one's tomorrow night, City Center, 6 to 8:00 PM. Night involves the land use and transportation. February 13th, we'll have the community facilities and water resources meeting and housing, and the 20th will be focused, we'll be parks, and 27th will be economic competitiveness. So all meetings are Tuesday nights, 6 to 8:00 PM, in the upstairs community room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Peterson?
Just a couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Center for Public Safety Management representatives here for a couple of days, and they are currently completing their study, and from what I understand, we should be getting those results hopefully in the next few weeks. I'm not sure if that's gonna be a couple of weeks or three or four weeks from now, but that visit went really well, and last year, we also saw a rise in our calls for service. We had over 1,000 additional calls for service from the year prior. And lastly, I just wanna, on all behalf of all the staff, I wanna thank Aaron for his six years of service with the city of Forest Lake, and we appreciate his leadership and guidance while he was here. So thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Bailey?
Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the senior center membership luncheon and represent the city of Forest Lake. I introduced myself there and had a nice afternoon party with the seniors. Actually, did have a really good time. Sharon works really hard to put that on, and she does a really good job.
For sure. Thank you. For your last time here.
Yeah, this is my, my last meeting, and my time's at this point measured in hours, not days, and so really just wanna take some time to thank you for the opportunity to serve in Forest Lake. It's been my distinct privilege. Certainly, it's been a great opportunity for here, both personally and professionally, and just looking forward to the best for you all, and certainly you are fortunate to really have a great team of people and staff in place that really is positioned well to take you wherever you wanna go, and so just thanks to all the, the work that they do, and I wish them all the best and you all the best, and, you know, certainly look forward to meeting and bumping into you all in the future. So thank you for my, the opportunity to serve here, thanks.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I think this weekend, yeah, that is all, we appreciate everything you've done, and wish you best in any future endeavors in Rochester or wherever it may take you, so...
Thank you.
All right. Any, go ahead.
Thank you, honor, no, no updates at this time.
All right, thank you, Bridget. Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, nothing specific for updates. I do wanna wish Aaron best of luck in Rochester and going through some stuff this morning, and, you know, always realize and remember all the things that you had the opportunity to work on together upon reviewing or year in review, so, you know, a lot of reflection there, and memories going just through those lists of paper there, but certainly accomplished a lot in a short amount of time, and I think the city's certainly seen some benefits from those applications, projects, and continuing as we'll see some additional phases moving forward in some of those next year, so good luck.
All right, thanks very much. Sam?
Yeah, I, I too, I wanna wish Aaron good luck and thanks for your service here, and maybe we'll bump into you at Rochester someday, we'll see how that goes. Also, I attended, since the last time we reported on meetings, I attended two school board meetings. Totally forgot to grab the, my notes, went on the way out the door, but it was mostly policy stuff that they're going through right now, and they're also... But it was mostly policy stuff that they're going through right now, and they're also going to be talking about, they do have to make some budget cuts now again because of the, well, because of the, how the vote went. Also, what they want to do is they want to get together with folks and just talk to them, and it doesn't matter if you voted against it, for it, or didn't vote at all. And they just want, and they have several dates that they want, they're going to be doing this. I don't have those dates in front of me. If you look at their website, they'll, they'll have that for you. I just forgot to grab my notes. And then I made one meeting at the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District, and of course, their, their, the discussion is, you know, looking for money and that sort of things for their next projects, and then discussion of what they're going to be doing in some of the lakes and controlling weeds and that kind of thing. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ed?
I don't have much of an update, but I did do something unusual for me. I attended Columbus's Planning Commission meeting instead of Forest Lake's, and the topic was the approval of the asphalt plant for the Planning Commission to give a conditional use permit. And I did have, have the opportunity to speak in the public forum, kind of like Ron and Alvin do. And I spoke just as a taxpayer of Forest Lake, not as a city official, in no way any capacity of a city official. Unfortunately, it didn't do any good, but it looks like the plant is headed to be here. But along with that, and in that vein, and I, I guess this is as good as any to ask, but I'd like the council to consider maybe that we should purchase that land they have for sale so that we don't have a cement plant or another who knows what on the entrance to Forest Lake. So that's about all I had. I didn't attend any, any, I missed the airport meeting, but I did watch it on television, and I look forward to the, attending the next one.
Thank you, Ed. I did have some conversations with Mayor Dave Pavoni over in Columbus, and, you know, I'm looking forward to having a joint meeting. Reason for that being the 180th exit off the freeway. If we can both work together and do some lobbying at the legislature and see where we can go with that, but I think it would be extremely beneficial for all four communities to have that done. But I think it would be a perfect time to talk to them about that corner as well and see if there's something we can do. It does make sense to see if that could be incorporated into Forest Lake and taken care from there. I did, I did miss the senior luncheon, so Bailey, thank you for covering for us all. They are a great bunch over there. We are going to have a discussion coming up. The, Mike brought up to me the need for a dishwasher over there. It's something that isn't in their budget right now, but it's something that we should look at for taking care of our building and, and getting that fixed for them. The one they have there is not functioning, so I appreciate that, Mike. Other than that, I did have the opportunity to talk with a fairly close, but not local developer that's looking to put up a business here and just preliminary discussions. So I referred them to, to talk to us a little bit more about it. They had some initial hesitations with some of the things they heard, but not a huge business, but, you know, 20, 30,000 square foot building, and he put fingers crossed that we can see some plans coming this spring on that. Ed, Mike?
Aaron, good luck to you. Again, great job, and the city is, is better off for having your service here. And the hiring that you've done has really changed the trajectory of how we work with the residents and the business owners from seven years ago. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did have an opportunity to talk to two people who participate in the senior center and about the, about the dishwasher, and also about the stove that has evidently been, it's not allowed to be used by Excel Energy. So hopefully, we can get those two things fixed for them and get that up, get that going. I also participated in the Center for Public Safety Management meeting. I agree, Rick, that was a good meeting, at least with me. And I look forward to their report and helping the city get past what happened. Parks, Lines, and Trails meets on February 6th, and the Planning Commission meets on February 7th.
Very good. So maybe a couple of quick highlights for the YMCA. They just wrapped up their 2017 annual report. Couple of kind of statistics I found interesting. 465,000 people used that facility in 2017. They're at a membership level of 10,700 members. It's worth repeating over and over and over again. Forest Lake residents have some free benefits over there, one of which is the splash pad. There were 6,500 splash pad visits, 565 guest passes, and they tend to not turn anybody away. So they also offered $232,000 in scholarships for programming at either free or subsidized rates. So happy to see some of that investment coming back to the community. Also attended last Thursday a rush line task force meeting. That was the first meeting since the local, locally preferred alternative was approved late in 2017. As I think everyone knows, the Forest Lake solution for that rush line is a dotted line at this point, bus plan between White Bear Lake and Forest Lake. But of note for Forest Lake on the 2017 plan is a protection of Route 275, which is the current express route between Forest Lake and St. Paul. There's some conversation at Metcom, or Met Transit of that line potentially being discontinued. And so the rush line found it important to protect that, put it on their work plan, something we should probably keep an eye on as well. I believe that that is fairly heavily used by residents, but worth probably getting some more information on who's using it, how important is it, and making sure that that stays on the agenda. Otherwise, I had an opportunity to do a snowplow ride along the night of the, or the afternoon of the storm, so thank you to Dave and his staff again for a great job of clearing. And it's interesting to see in action, a great reminder of everybody of, that it's big, heavy equipment and to stay awake, give them room to do their jobs. So thank you for that work.
All right, thank you. Ed?
I do have one thing to add. I believe tomorrow night is a town hall meeting with Tom Emmer, for any of those people that might want to attend. But I plan on attending to lobby hard to try and bend his ear to try and help us get a soundproof wall as part of the 35 project along Clear Lake, and maybe he can help us do that. Michelle Bachmann got us a bridge over the St. Croix. Tom Emmer could at least get us a partial quarter-mile wall made out of wood. And the good news is Mexico doesn't have to pay for it, so.
What is that meeting at?
Eric, do you know?
It's in Anoka.
It's in Anoka, but what's the name of the place?
I forget the name of the place.
I know it's.
We're not going to, I'll be at the meeting here.
All right. Look for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. You're in my bag.